Good evening, a quorum being present. We will begin tonight's meeting of the Planning Board for June 26, 2024, held here in the 1820 courtroom at Plymouth Town Hall, 26 Court Street. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which is an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law on March 29, 2023. This meeting is being conducted via both remote and in-person participation. Those seeking information about how to attend remotely can find that on the town's website. Beginning tonight's meeting, normally we go into our administrative notes, but tonight we have no minutes, covenants, plans, releases, or Form A plans. So I'll move to the first item of our agenda, which is committee appointments and updates. And beginning with the Open Space Committee. We have an applicant for reappointment to a three-year term, Andrea Dickinson, and I understand Ms. Dickinson is available to us on Zoom. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. So I've been on the Open Space Committee for a little bit over four years, I believe. So I'm seeking reappointment. I've really enjoyed my time on the Open Space Committee. I have helped lead a handful of initiatives, including the establishment of a trail guide, helping to advertise the existing open space that the town of Plymouth has, which I think is a really great asset. I also helped create this invasive plant guide and helped partner with the town of Plymouth on an invasive plant training. I also went through the Keystone Cooperative Training that UMass Ann Hurst offers. And I also helped create the Pollinator Pathway website for the town of Plymouth. So just a quick sampling. Also, last year, I helped put together a panel discussion on the topic of balance and growth and development, of which Steve Bulletin was a part, which was a great event. So I would like to continue doing more things like that.
Fantastic. I'll bring it back to the committee. Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Keen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Andrea, I had an opportunity to serve with you on the Open Space Committee in the past, and I found it to be a very interesting experience, and your contributions were absolutely wonderful. I just have one question for you. Over the next three years, what would you like to see the Open Space Committee accomplish that you might not have been able to accomplish in the years that you've been on the committee?
Well, I mean, I think that the panel discussion we did last year was, I mean, such a big topic, and it's also like a topic of increasing interest to people across town, that the concept of balance and growth and development. That was something that we, when we did that, we thought maybe there could be more installments of that kind of conversation, like bringing different knowledgeable people together to kind of have some dialogue and bring the community in. And so, I mean, I think that there's so much more to that topic. So I think, I mean, education is one of the things I'm most interested in. So I think furthering that conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee members? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Through the chair.
Mr. Grandy.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Andrea Dickinson to the three-year term.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Keen, seconds. As we are all present tonight, we can do this by a show of hands. So all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Next on our agenda is the Cedarville Steering Committee, and we have the reappointment of Tess Brennan to a three-year term. And...
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
I am good. How are you tonight?
Good.
What would you like to tell us about you for your reappointment request?
Well, I think we do, you know, I'm not going to stand here and say, I do this and I do that and I did this and that. We really, the committee really works as a group. I think we've worked pretty well as a group. Sometimes our exchanges get heated because we all have different opinions, but we all come together. And I think the biggest, the most, one of the most important things we do is get people in our community, try to get people in our community engaged in what's going on, encourage them to take an active interest and to participate. They come to our meetings. We have pretty good attendance. When people come before us, we ask pointed, intelligent questions, I think. I think I do, anyway, and most of the committee does. And I would like to continue doing that. Cedarville is in South Plymouth, and there's a lot of undeveloped space here. There are a lot of developers who I think would like to develop that space. So we have a lot of projects coming before us. And I think we try to ask hard questions. I'm not really, I don't really represent any particular group in Plymouth other than people who live here and make their homes here. I don't have business with the town. I don't represent development interests or business interests. But I do feel like I represent people who live here, love Plymouth, who are here because they love it and want to preserve all the great things about the town.
Great, thank you very much. Again, back to the board. Does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to reappoint Tess Brennan to a three-year term on the Cedarville Steering Committee.
Mr. Grandy, so moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Donaldson, seconds. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? It is unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next is the Mannamet Village Steering Committee, and we have a new applicant, Roberta Capella, for a three-year term. Please come up, introduce yourself and...
Hi, I'm Roberta Capella.
Just please try and speak into that microphone. Sometimes the acoustics in here are not the greatest.
Sometimes I wander, so bring me back. I'm Roberta Capella. You want to tell me about myself?
Please, tell us a little about yourself.
It's a little intimidating, but...
We don't bite, and if we did, that's why they keep us this far away.
I taught seventh and eighth grade, so I'm used to it. Well, a little bit about me. I've been a native of White Horse Beach for 65 years. Grew up there, my mom and dad grew up there. My grandparents, they used to own a restaurant there, The Beachway, turned into The Full Sail, which, I don't know. I got hooked on the Mannamet Village Steering Committee, oh, sorry. Thank you. Because I did a presentation about the speeding. And I know I have some big shoes to fill. Tim, Lou's gone, David's gone. So, yeah, I just liked working with the group. I love Alice, I have a lot of respect for her. And just being a resident of White Horse Beach for that long, I just hope I can make, you know, an impact and add something to the community, so.
Great. I'll bring that back to the board. Any questions? Mr. Donaldson.
So I, excuse me, so I'm a resident of Mannamet, and I hear you speaking a lot about White Horse.
Yes.
What other areas in Mannamet do you think would need some attention? Or is there anything that the committee has currently decided they want to do a focus on?
Well, I think the whole area. I mean, I know it's Mannamet, I just say White Horse Beach. I'm used to saying White Horse Beach. I'd like to see, you know, some support for the small businesses there and things like that. Or just, my big concern is the speeding of the traffic. But that's not just White Horse Road, that's all over. I just want to bring the community together. Don't I answer that?
So I'll ask my standard question of new applicants to the steering committees. So what is your understanding as to the role of the Mannamet Village Steering Committee?
What is my what?
What is your understanding as to the role of the steering committee?
All right. Again, I'm still learning. About six months ago, I did bring an issue there, and everyone was very kind to me. I've gone to a couple of meetings since. I think it's to just bring the community together, work with the master plan. And I went to that meeting the other day, very impressed. I was glad there was such a big showing. I don't, again, I don't know, I'm still learning. So I just hope I can bring a positive impact.
That's a perfectly acceptable answer. There is no right answer. That's okay, just... Okay. Any other questions from the board? Please, Ms. Keen.
So you're a new applicant, and it says here on our correspondence, our agenda, that there is a vacant two-year term. So I'm going to give you the task of trying to find someone who is willing to volunteer for that vacant two-year term. Are you willing to do that?
Yes, I already have someone who's starting to apply, so yes.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
And she has come to some meetings, too, so.
Wonderful. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Well, what more can we ask than that?
Yeah, exactly.
With that, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Roberta Capella to the Mannamet Village Steering Committee.
Mr. Bennett, so moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Keen, seconds. All in favor? It is unanimous? Yep, I was going to say, please make sure you go into the town clerk's office and get sworn in for that, and then you can start deliberating with the rest of the body. Next on our agenda, we have the North Plymouth Steering Committee, and we have two reappointments who are applying. First is Everett Malaguti, and I do understand that Everett is in the building but attending another meeting this evening. Everett, I believe, is reasonably well-known to everyone here on the board. So I will ask the board's indulgence in considering Everett, without Everett appearing before us tonight, given that he has a legitimate reason not to do so, unless someone feels differently, in which case Everett has indicated that we can go and retrieve him and bring him to the board. Seeing nobody, and I am fine with that as well myself, do I have a motion to reappoint Everett for a three-year term?
So made.
Mr. Grandy, so moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bennett, seconds. Any discussion? No. All in favor? It is unanimous. We also have a reappointment applicant, Eric Dykman. Lauren?
Good evening. Eric Dykman indicated that he's traveling. He's unable to attend tonight, but he did note that he has been on the previous three appointments to the committee, so he's a longstanding member.
Very good. And since he has contacted us and let us know that this is a conflict for him this evening, that's fine. Unless board members feel strongly that they wish to carry this over to another day to have him present. Seeing no indication of that, I'll entertain a motion.
Through the chair.
Mr. Grandy.
I'd like a motion to reappoint Mr. Dykman to the three-year term.
Mr. Grandy, so moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Donaldson, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It is unanimous. Moving next, we have the West Plymouth Steering Committee. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. We have the Center Steering, Plymouth Center Steering Committee. Two reappointments. First, Andrea Davis.
Good evening, I'm Andrea Davis. I'm looking to be reappointed and currently the vice chair of the Steering Committee and very much like the work.
Good evening. So tell us, how have you been enjoying your time on the Steering Committee?
There have been a lot of things that have come in front of us. New motels, safe harbor, just all kinds of different facets with the emergency room at the hospital. It's, it's, it's just been a lot, and I've enjoyed it very much, hearing about all the different things that are going to be happening downtown.
That's great. I'll bring that to the board. Any questions? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Mr. Grandy.
I move to reappoint Andrea Davis to the three-year term, and thank you for the time you've served already.
We have a motion by Mr. Grandy. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Keen, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the reappointment of Carol Rupinian. And do we have Ms. Rupinian on Zoom?
We do not.
We do not.
How many terms has she already served? Does anybody know? If I may ask that question?
We do not have that information tonight.
I will leave that to the discretion of the board. Does the board wish to continue this for another date or address it now?
Well, there was sort of a positive information on her application, so it might be nice if we asked her to either submit a little, appear on Zoom or come in front of us for a reappointment.
As we have at least one board member who has requested that she come in, and I don't have any objection to that.
I would second that.
All right, we have two board members who would like to have her come in, so why don't we continue the reappointment of Ms. Rupinian to another meeting and ask her, we can contact her, ask her when she's available and schedule it for a time when we know she can be available. Very good. Moving next now to the West Plymouth Steering Committee. We have the reappointment of Brian Collins to a three-year term. Do we have Mr. Collins present?
Mr. Collins is not present on Zoom, nor have we received a comment from him.
Okay. Same thing. I will defer that back to the board.
I think I have the same opinion that we'd like to hear.
I agree.
I agree, because if we're going to bring back Carol Rupinian, we should bring back Brian also.
And I had the opportunity to sit, you know, I'm the liaison to the West Plymouth Steering Committee, and I've worked with Brian, and he's been very active, but I would like him to come before the whole board and in one manner, either by Zoom or in person.
As it is the pleasure of the board, why don't we also ask Mr. Collins to provide a date when he is available for one of our meetings? Very good. And that concludes our appointments for the evening. Next on our agenda is the Cedarville Steering Committee update. Ms. Sheridan, please.
Hi, my name is Marsha Sheridan. I'm the clerk for the Cedarville Steering Committee, and I want to thank you for inviting us tonight. And the Cedarville Village anticipates a lot of changes for us in the future. In the past year, we've spent building community engagement, and we've extended invitations to the chief of police, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, the chairman of the Planning Board, the assistant DPW director, two area state representatives, and the chairman of the Roads Advisory Committee to help keep the community informed. And I'm happy to say, all of the invitations were accepted, and everybody came and spoke to the community to keep them aware of what's going on, to give positive feedback to them. And we've been actively working with the planning department to establish a survey, which will be distributed to the community with the assistance of the Old Colony Planning Council. And I've recently learned from a resident of the White Cliffs, Mr. Paul Cunningham, that we will have the assistance of a professional survey writer, Mark Dahlgren, to help us at our meeting in July. And I was very happy to hear that. We also have from White Cliffs, Mr. Drew Ford, who is going to help distribute. He has access to over 600 emails with the White Cliffs community, and he is willing to send out the link for us. But we're planning on using Facebook also, and the Cedarville Steering Committee has its own Facebook page, and we use it to keep the community aware of when we're going to have meetings and things of that sort. And we've been operating since March without a chairperson, but I'm happy to say, quorums have been reached every meeting since last July, and all of our agendas and minutes are posted up-to-date on the town's website. And we've had a little bit of confusion with the Wi-Fi link for the community room, but Donnie Costello's working on that now, and I think it will be fixed by July. And we get a lot of feedback from the public on traffic concerns, but we're very happy to say, the Plymouth Police Department has established a satellite station for Cedarville, and the new station opened in April, and its existence was announced by Chief Flynn at the February Cedarville Steering Committee meeting. And he has also created a community connection team, and we have Officer Alex Smolinski as a liaison to the police department. And she, she texts frequently, she calls, whatever, just to find out what is going on and what she can do to help. And I received a text from her this morning, and she wanted me to relay it. This is a quote, "There is a huge need for what the committee is working towards with the traffic modifications, and Chief Flynn couldn't agree more. We want to help you make this happen. It will make a great impact for the safety of the community, and Cedarville has the support of the chief and the Plymouth Police Department." So we also have a concern with the White Cliffs. They have a golf cart crossing, and it's just so dangerous. And we want to see if we can do something to improve the signage for them. They cross from one side of State Road to the other in their golf carts, and there's really not much signage at all for them. So we would really like to actively do something to help them. And speaking of crosswalks, in the immediate Cedarville Village area, they're practically non-existent. So that's another thing we'd like to see improved. And we're currently waiting for the feedback from the DPW on the GPI Traffic Study, which is currently being conducted for the Cedarville Village. James Downey spoke to us in November, and he thought that the survey would be all done by the fall, and he'll come back and update us then. One thing that we'd like to establish is a liaison with our committee and the Planning Board. So we're hoping that that's something that we can see pretty soon. And we've been working on the, let's see, the southeastern Mass Coastal Pine Barrens has given us a couple of signs, like they've given the other villages, and we're working on getting those put up by the DPW. And in the past year, we've had meetings with a local developer regarding new housing being constructed, and we've had questions about a cell tower in Cedarville and how it's impacting cellphone service in the area. And we'd like to get an assessment from the town on how local businesses will be protected when bridge construction begins. And we've got lots of questions regarding how traffic will be kept flowing during this construction. And Mr. McKay, George McKay, reported last month. He saw plans from the federal government, which include a rotary for Cedarville in connection with the Sagamore Bridge. So we got a little hopeful about that, and we're hoping maybe we'll get some federal funds from that project. So one thing is clear when we talk to everybody. The public does not want to wait until 2034 to see improvements made to the village. And we feel Cedarville has been overlooked by the town for a very long time, and we feel the time for improvements is now. We appreciate coming before you tonight to inform you of what our committee has been doing the past year, and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board? Ms. Keen.
Thank you for your report. It was very comprehensive. I do have a question about the liaison. Could you explain a little bit more what you're trying to achieve? Who is the Cedarville, are you the liaison, Tim?
Yes, I can answer that question. I have been to the Cedarville Steering Committee meetings three times this year. There's a conflict when they're being scheduled because I sort of on the Community Preservation Committee, the Roads Advisory Committee, the Building Committee. They all seem to want to meet on Thursday nights. So if all four committees are meeting on Thursday nights, I can't make every single...
We have changed our schedule, and we're meeting the third Wednesday of every month now.
Okay, so I asked the last year to include Jerry Hooker, when she was the chair, to send me an email with the dates of when your meetings are being scheduled. And I was the chair, and I was there that night with the police chief and with the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I was also there the night when the Pine Barrens people had given you the signs. I was there that night evening also, so...
That was a long time ago.
I am taking Paul McCall this place, who passed away. So I have been and will continue to do my best to make your meetings.
Thank you. And do you want me to start emailing you to remind you?
Yes, please. That'd be fantastic. I would appreciate that. That way I can tell you whether I'm going to make it or not, depending on other meetings in the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And actually, if you're scheduling those meetings in advance, if you want to give the Planning Board notice through staff, we can announce meetings at the end of our meeting so that the public knows which steering committees... I'm going to make that same recommendation to all steering committees. If they'd like to provide notice as to when their meetings are, the Planning Board would be more than happy at its meetings to announce between them and the next meeting which steering committees are going to be meeting so that people can learn about them and attend.
I think you were at the meeting, and you were the one who made the suggestion we pick the third Wednesday of each month, because you do the second and the fourth with the planning board.
Right, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Then I have a follow-up question. I'm intrigued by the federal government, including a rotary for Cedarville. And you said someone in your group had seen the plans?
Yeah, George McKay, he's chairman of Precinct 8.
Yeah, I know George. Yeah, and so he's seen plans. But beyond that, has anybody, could you add a little bit to that?
So the DPW is very much involved in this. And for the first time, we have Mass Highway, or Mass DOT now, Mass DOT, who is very supportive, too, of putting the roundabout in. And so up until the last, I would say, eight months, nine months, they've said it to us, we have 200 other intersections that are far worse. This is not one of our priorities. But I can say recently, they've been very receptive. We've had discussions about using, and the reference to federal funds is almost all the road improvements that we talk about come through federal funds through the state. So they are very interested in helping us with this project. The Economic Development Foundation has a piece of property on Hedge Road that's for sale. Once that closing occurs, $2 million of the sale price comes to the town to be used for these improvements. So we have the $2 million to offer it. They're doing design work now. Mass Highway is very supportive. And again, anytime we have a chance, we're urging everybody to make sure that this piggybacks onto the bridge project, too. So I'm very encouraged, for the first time, that everybody seems supportive of this now. It's not just us begging the state to do it.
Thank you. I appreciate the update. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions?
I have one.
Mr. Grandy.
You say you're meeting every month, but nobody wants to be the chair?
Well, I'm hoping that in July, we can get a chair.
You can actually reorganize and hopefully put a chair in place?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be fantastic. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda tonight, we have ZVA 4129, Mark Buchanan, Sixth Shore Road. A post facto special permit required per Section 203-1.1 and Section 205-4 for the R-25 dimensional table to waive front yard setback to construct... dimensional table to waive front yard setback to construct a detached garage. Good evening, Mr. Parker.
Good evening. How are you folks today?
Good, thank you.
Good. So I am here with Mark Buchanan. And on his behalf, he has run into a shed issue down near Great Herring Pond. They have my plan. This is the one that does show the well. It's on a little plateau close to where the shed went in. It shows septic down off the north side of the house, as requested by the Engineering Division. The relief that's requested for this property is to come down from the 35-foot minimum setback under zoning down to about 25 feet. That is the nature of what he needs to be doing. We're located, as you can see on that locust map up in the northwest corner of Great Herring Pond. To look at the plan of 35 to 25, if I could run through the staff report, that might be sufficient. You have this. This is Mark Buchanan with me, of course. You've got petition, all of the stuff that is listed in your packet. This is post facto, as you know. According to the town records, this has a bunch of little lots altogether. And should you vote to recommend this, one of the conditions is that a record plan should be provided, showing the adjacent lots have been merged into one accessory parcel. And that ought to work. This accessory structure over 400 square feet caught even me a little by surprise. I'm fairly intimate with zoning, as you know. I've always looked at the minimums on the shed stuff. I thought that this might just be a big shed, but it isn't. Once you pass 400 feet, it's an accessory structure of some sort. When I first looked at it, as you can see from the picture embedded in the plan, the front of it has a garage door. I'm thinking, gee, I've known this guy all my life. What's he talking about? Shed? Looks like a garage to me. But it isn't. He's turned in plans. He bought this and got it installed. And I guess it's safe to say that he is here to beg forgiveness for that and go through the proper permitting procedure. And I've noted going through this, there's some fairly extensive fines that are involved. So I guess you got to do more than beg for forgiveness, and that's the way it probably ought to be. So it does have one overhead door. They talk about how tall it is, not very. This I ran into when I was looking at the staff report. Not located in aquifer protection. An area of critical environmental concern. I kind of know this area around Great Herring Pond, Little Herring Pond, the Herring River Watershed, as an AC/DC. So we might want to double check the AC/DC designation if we need to before this goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Houses are not in a flood hazard. Wearing a dangerous species only in the pond. The land is okay here. The pond has freshwater muscles. It does have a well in private septic. The town fire department did not have a problem with this. Engineering thought we could show the well and the septic. So we have, when we get to the zoning board, they have a contradictory rule. We'll have to deal with their plan, formal plan that was filed with the petition, and then accept a condition to show the well and the septic that we've already shown on a revised plan. So we're certainly good with that. We do have a recommendation from staff. It's appropriate. It's an appropriate use in the residential neighborhood and zone. Most of these lots do not have the expanse of the chief's lot. They've got, they're small lots, and they're all non-conforming with length of setbacks from the street, 10 foot from the sides. So he has some room, and we can do what is needed to be done here. But this special permanent relief, relief fits better with the neighborhood and the way it is, with things 20 foot off the street, than it does at the 35-foot setback. But that's the rule. You've got a detached structure, you've got to conform to the new zoning setbacks, and that's why we are here. They also note in the staff report that adequate appropriate facilities are in place. There's no hazard to pedestrian vehicles. There's no nuisance or adverse effect upon the neighborhood. What's happened here is something in the range of 16, 18 neighbors that have come out in support. Or no objection to Mark's shed. Had he gone through it conventionally when he commenced, they would be just as happy. So those are good things to take into consideration. The conditions, you've got to do an MLC, a recorded plan I've spoken to, revise the plan I've spoken to. He can't live in the shed. I don't think he'd want to. Got a nice tile floor, all sorts of stuff in it. And inspectional servicing filing fees will be late, filing fees required, up to double. How they handle this is not something that I have dealt with. I know that Mark would like to speak to you also. Do you want to do that now or at the end? You want me to do questions first?
Why don't we have the applicant come speak to us so that we can?
And then I can come back.
And then you can come right back.
Buchanan, here you go. Excuse me.
Good afternoon. I'm Mark Buchanan, and I live at Sixth Shore Road. I recently purchased the land next to me. Little history, grew up in Boston. My mom passed away when we were young. My father remarried, and we moved down to Manomet. My father was a fire chief up in the city, and we owned a Surrey shop. I don't know if any of you were still around back in them days. It was a big donut shop that went back when they were building the power plant. I graduated from Plymouth Cava High School in 1975. I built a home on Hillcrest Street down in Cedarville. And then a police officer owned that house and offered the house I own now after I built a gorgeous home for me and my ex-wife to move onto the pond. We had aspirations to move down there, and that was going to be our dream home, but it didn't happen. I just served the fire department up in Boston for 33 years. I became a fire chief up in the city, and I retired down here. The shed had, it was something I wanted to build. It had just shown up. I didn't realize, it doesn't even look what I originally was going to purchase. But it came in pieces on a flatbed, and I had to land for it. And I thought I was within the right with the setbacks at 20 feet, which I thought was for the shed. And off of my neighbor's property, I believe I was 20 something feet. I probably, I'm, you know, asking you people, I wouldn't be here if my ex-wife didn't take me back to court after 15 years of divorce. She came down and is very spiteful right now. And that's irrelevant or not. I built the shed. I didn't pull permits, but I've built things in the past, and I overbuild them. And I'm just begging, not begging, but I'm asking for your forgiveness at this point. That's the best I can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you. Thank you. I'm a member of the Herring Pond Watershed Committee. I've been the president of our local association, cleaning up the beach in the area. I've actually counted herring down there sometimes, so I'm very involved with the area. Just my little background.
Thank you.
And it's probably to Mr. Buchanan's detriment, but I've known him ever since I've gotten here, some 52 years.
You call that a detriment, huh?
Excuse me?
You call that a detriment?
Well, I might at this point, yeah. You might. I wouldn't. It's been fun. All right, so questions and comments, please.
Let me bring it to staff first.
Thank you. So as pointed out, and I think a lot of this was covered, so we won't go into a lot of the detail, but this is a de facto proposal. Should the Zoning Board of Appeals grant this request, just point out that there is a penalty. The fines for the permits are all doubled. So there is and will be a penalty assessed for doing this in a de facto pre-permit way. The requirement in this zone is for a 35-foot setback. They're proposing, or they have 25 feet. And so that's a waiver of about 10 feet. And that's more than consistent with most of the types of waivers we've seen for this type of secondary structure before. I will point out that this is a 440-square-foot shed. If it was actually 300 square feet, the setback would be 20. And you heard the property owner talk about he thought the setback was 20. It's 20 if you're 300 square feet. So this is over that at 440, and that's what kicks in the major setback of 35 feet. So again, 25 feet is still an ample setback. You have the opportunity, in this case, to actually see how it looks, which is something you don't normally get to do when you review these. And based on that 25-foot setback, staff is recommending that the board provide a favorable recommendation to the, with, to the ZVA, knowing that there is a penalty here for failure to do the permitting in advance, which is the doubling of the fines, doubling of the fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. I'll bring it back to the board. Questions for the applicant? Mr. Grandy and then Mr. Donaldson.
Question on the shed. Is there power in the shed? Is there power out there at the shed? Is there power, electricity?
Yes, there's eight circuit can for basic receptacles and lighting.
Right, so that'll all be re-inspected?
Yep.
In the decision, right? Because none of it was inspected, correct? None of it was inspected originally, right?
No.
So we put in an electrical service without any type of inspection at all? So within the decision, that whole shed is going to be inspected, electrical, if there's any water, whatever the case may be, that shed will get inspected through the process?
Yes.
And brought up to whatever code that it needs to be brought to?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Donaldson. What particular purpose are you using this for? Is it any kind of engine work on boats or something? Or?
I was an electrician prior to becoming a firefighter. And I've done a lot of construction over the years. It's all hand tools, power tools. I have a lawn tractor I don't even put in there. It's really basically a shop is what I built it for. I have, it's all laid out nice and neat. It's got my automotive tools for my car if I go out and work on it there. My, all my drills, I have a lot of tools.
No chemicals, oils?
No.
Anything like that?
I actually store them in my, I have a smaller shed over by, up on the top there, for all my lawn tools. It's, and that was previously there. It's got all my, where I put my gasoline and all that stuff.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Bennett?
Evening. So this might be a question for Mr. Hartman, but if I heard you correctly, Mr. Parker, if this were an attached structure, the setback to the front would be 20 feet? Is that correct?
For non-conforming protected law.
Pre-existing non-conforming?
Yes, so if it was attached, the setback would be 20. And if it was under 300 square feet and detached, it would be 20. It's because it's detached and over 300 that you'd kick in the higher setback.
Right. So you stated that you had support of, was it 19 of the butters?
16 to 18. You know the number? All of them?
It was 18, but I didn't realize I had to go farther out, and I would have, I would have canvassed the whole neighborhood at that time. I have a very good relationship with all my neighbors.
Okay, I might suggest to you that you have them either present or something, and writing from them when you get to the ZVA. Because I think that will be very helpful to your case.
Have something for the ZVA. We have those, Dan, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Parker. The only other question I have is, is this going to be going before the Conservation Commission at all? Are you within the 100-foot buffer?
No, or 130 feet away.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Keen?
So Mr. Buchanan, I think it falls to me. Shall I speak up so you can hear?
I don't have my hearing aids on.
Okay. So I think it falls to me a little bit that when we have a post facto, it's a little disturbing to the board because it sets precedent in the community for those that obviously would like to do something that could be difficult. And then once you do it, it's hard to tear it down. So just understand that it's sort of falling to me to chastise you for not understanding what you were doing for wiring it. I understand you're an electrician, so you understood the wiring. But there were sort of violation after violation in this. And so hopefully in the future, this isn't going to send a precedent for your community to just do what they want to do and then come before the board and ask for forgiveness. Thank you.
I understand. Thank you.
Anything further from the board? I'll, seeing nothing, I'll ask, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak regarding this matter?
Hello, climbing board, can you hear me?
Is there somebody on Zoom?
Yes.
Please, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please identify yourself and go ahead.
Hi there, my name is Paul Buchanan. I'm a consultant in Boston, and I'm the son of Mr. Buchanan. A little background on this case is that Judy and Richard McAndrew were named on the season to sit bought the undevelopable property of Eighth Shore Road in 2019 for $22,000.
Can you hold, can you hold?
Who then sold the land?
Sir, 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 can you hold, sir? Hold on one second, please.
Can you hold on for one second? We just need to get your volume a little louder. If you can start again.
Is that better?
Better. Yeah, if you can start again.
Okay. My name is Paul. I'm a consultant in Boston, and I'm also the son of Mark Buchanan. Some background around this case is that Judy and Richard McAndrew were named on the season to sit bought the undevelopable property of Eighth Shore Road in 2019 for $22,000, who then sold the land to her brother, Mark Buchanan, who owned Sixth Shore Road, the adjacent property, in the fall of 2023 for $1. Mr. Buchanan has since cleared the .23 acres of wooded conservation land adjacent to Great Herring Pond. And as he just told you, he's on the committee in the association. As you should know, also in accordance with his permit from 2019 for the extension of the deck, that is a conservation land, and that should not have been demolished or built upon. In clearing this land for his own personal use, he has also built non-permitted decks and retaining walls over 3 feet, the largest of which this metal structure currently fits upon. The structure is in violation of zoning approximately to the street and was also constructed without a permit. This metal structure is an eyesore from the road and obstructs the use of the water. It is my recommendation that this metal structure should not be allowed to remain due to the aforementioned, and that Mr. Buchanan be required to return Eighth Shore Road to its original use. I have provided Spencer Fankos with photos of these additional non-permitted violations. And additionally, I also believe that he has converted his storycock to the two-car garage into an ADU unit, which his current, which his relatives currently live in during the summer when they visit from Myrtle Beach to visit their grandchildren. And I implore the board to look further into this.
Thank you very much. I'll give the applicant an opportunity to respond.
So I've gone through, I've been divorced for 15 years. I retired from the fire department 17 months ago, and my wife and my son have gone on a mission of vendetta moves up in the city of Boston. They have no... They have no interest in my property. I've given my wife several properties up there. He's come down, he's trespassed on my property, and they're doing this maliciously to...
Mr. Buchanan, I understand. What I'd like you to do is I'd like you to respond only to the issues raised regarding the use of the property.
The use of the property is, it's a yard. It's my, it's, it's a gorgeous yard with, I put a shed on the back of it.
So if I could, so before the ZBA and you right now tonight, it's really just a request about the shed. So if any person has an issue and thinks there are other violations, I think I heard, it was very difficult to hear, but the comment about an ADU, conservation land, those things should all be filed with the building commissioner and he'll investigate it. They could also start with me if they'd like. But again, right now, the only thing before this board is the shed. If there are other issues, we'll investigate it. And if other actions are needed, those be brought forward by the building commissioner.
Thank you. And I'd also like to-
It has followed up with the building commissioner. And I want to thank you all for your time tonight.
It's so hard to hear you, sir. I'm not sure if it's your phone or...
I heard him, but he basically-
I can adjust.
So thank you very much for your comment. We appreciate it. Just a reminder generally to the community that in order for this board to be able to have time to review anything prior to a meeting, we do have a 48-hour submission requirement as part of our public comment policy. It can be waived in the event of an emergency. But again, in order for us to be able to actually do things, it is helpful. I'll note for the, that I personally went down to the property today. I typically will go within the few days before, but I went to the property today. So there's only so much time that any of us can do to capture things. We need the information if we're going to properly investigate anything. But we're correct in that the only thing before us tonight is the issue of the nonconforming shed with respect to the setback that was put forth there. Anything further from the, Mr. Donaldson?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Anyone else on Zoom? Okay. So at this point, I will bring it back to the board for a motion. Mr. Grandy.
I will make a motion to grant relief in our opinion to the zoning board of appeals for this particular project with staff's recommendations and all re-inspections and all fees paid. That's my motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Grandy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bennett, seconds. Further discussion? Let me just say that, again, I did go down to the property. And this is, one of the ironies is that given the particular locale of the property, the topography and where the fence is, actually putting this closer to the fence makes the giant building less visible from the street than if it had been set further back. And I spoke to two of your neighbors immediately, one directly across the street and one abutting, both of whom said they had no problem with this. And those would be the people who actually would be impacted most by this. So to the extent that the board wishes to consider that, I wanted to report that. Ms. Keen?
I have a question for Mr. Hartman. Because this is a, it's been called, Mr. Hartman, it's been called a garage, it's been called a shed. Do we have any concerns about runoff in any way or how that's being handled because of the size of this building?
That'll all be looked at through, again, so if there's an issue identified, but that's all part of what the DBW typically always wants, rooftop drain, you know, drainage. So if they are concerned, they will certainly raise that issue.
At the ZBA?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further from the board? Then I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Well, I-
Hold on, Ms. Keen?
Can we just, can we do a vote across as opposed to hands?
Like to, we can, sir. I've had a request for a roll call vote. I'm happy to comply with that. Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Grandy?
Yes.
Ms. Keen?
No.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
And I vote no. Passes three to two. It's a recommendation to the ZBA.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Pardon me?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan.
Sorry to put you in this position.
That's all right. Thank you. Do we have any other business this evening? Seeing nothing. I'd like to just quickly do a report since we had the master plan kickoff meeting this past week. We had a phenomenal turnout. There were 186 people signed in, more actually attended, and that did not include committee members, staff, and the consultants. I am informed by our consultants, who have undertaken these types of events in towns and cities throughout, not just Massachusetts, but throughout the Northeast, that this is the best attended kickoff meeting that they've had, period. So we did better than a lot of cities that have shown up for these. The purpose of this particular meeting, contrary to what some people on certain Facebook sites may wish to say, was to educate the public as to the master plan and the process of creating a new one. A lot of the people who have involved in town government have heard this. Obviously, the town meeting members heard it because they had to vote on it. Other groups heard it because presentations were made to those groups. But the rest of the town didn't necessarily hear it. This was their opportunity to hear it. And not just the opportunity for them to hear it, but for them to go back to their neighbors and fellow residents and tell them more about it. So I'm excited by the fact that we have a good kickoff and hopefully we will continue to build momentum as we start working on more of the specific survey and data gathering from our residents. Again, I just want to stress to everyone that this is the community's master plan, and we want to hear from the community. We want all of the village steering committees to be part of this. We want all of the town boards and committees to be part of this, not just in their participation, but in gathering resident participation. That is still priority number one, especially during the public outreach phase of this project. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Actually, when's the next meeting?
Mr. Donaldson? Next meeting of the Plymouth Planning Board is currently scheduled for July 10.
Were you talking about the next master plan presentation meeting?
Yes. The next master plan meeting. So we do not have a next master plan meeting scheduled right now. The master plan committee is meeting on July 17th, at which time we're going to go through the initial presentation made by the consultants as part of the kickoff, get some of the community feedback, including the community was asked how they want to get engaged with this, how they want to meet. And we're going to start scheduling at that point some of the more local meetings. I can also say that the master plan committee has agreed that it wants to hold every second or third meeting of just the committee itself in a location other than town hall, moving it throughout town, so that other people can participate, not just in hearing and seeing what the committee is doing, but in providing public comment, letting us know, again, what's on their mind, what they want to talk about, and how they would like to engage with the committee, with the consultants, and ultimately with town government. So I will provide an update after the next master plan committee meeting as to when the next public event will be. But again, this is, as was explained, this is an 18-month process, and we're talking about a year's worth of public comment at least. So hopefully we will be starting to do this on a more regular basis. Mr. Hartman?
So if I could, I'm going to share my screen. If we can have that up for the TV. So this is the website. So if you go to the town of Plymouth's website and you look under boards and committees for master plan, this is the master plan committee. What I would urge anyone to do is if you look right at the very beginning-
Lee, we've lost you again.
So it's my screen, please.
Is it my screen, not the laptop?
There we go. We got it.
Don't move it.
So if you go to, if anyone's interested to go to this website and click on the first link there, it will take you to our other website where we can then, where you can then conduct the survey. So there is interactive map and then a survey that you can proceed with too. So I would urge anyone who's interested, very easy, go to the master plan, click on that first link, and it will take you right to the survey. Please, please, please fill it out.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anything further from the board? Ms. Keen?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The planning board is adjourned for the evening. Thank you all.